Welcome to the second in a series of political candidate forums in advance of the August 20th primary election. This forum is a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU Public Media. Today's candidates are running for Leon County School Board District 2. I'm Lynn Hatter of WFSU Public Media, and I'm joined by William Hatfield of the Tallahassee Democrat, and Danielle Irwin from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. We'll be questioning the candidates on various topics. Let's meet the candidates.
The candidates for Leon County School Board District 2, sitting left to right, are Roseanne Wood, who is the incumbent in this race, and challenger Daniel Zarudo. For those watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion as well. For those at home, here's how the forums are going to work. We will rotate which candidate gets to answer first. We have a lot of questions, so we're going to ask the candidates to keep your answer to about 60 seconds, or even less. I think it's mostly 45. We will keep time in a very technical way. When you have reached your time limit, you will hear this. At that point, you don't have to come to a dead stop, but please finish your sentence, and we are going to keep moving along.
If you are watching on Facebook, and you have a question for the candidates, go ahead and type them in the comments, and we'll get to as many of them as we can. Time is very limited, so you can improve your chances of your question being asked if you keep it brief and polite. Make the question applicable to all the candidates. Any questions before the start?
Let me...
Then let's jump in.
Right, jumping right in. This question will begin with our incumbent, Ms. Wood. What is the biggest existential threat or unmet educational need facing Leon County schools? 45 seconds.
Wow, existential, here we go. Well, I think the existence of public schools in some way is the existential question. We have a movement in this state in particular to move toward vouchers and private schools, and so I'm concerned in some ways that parents may be attracted to what sounds private. You know, we have 46 private schools in Leon County, but only two or three of them, I mean, many of them have two or three students. So I think that's the existential question, the future of public schools, which I think is the great equalizer in our country.
And we are going to be talking about that. Mr. Zarudo, same question.
I think the existential threat is, I go with Ms. Wood's comment of public schools, but I think what's really affecting that, especially in our district, is the lack of transparency and communication between the district, the teachers, with administrators, administrators with teachers, and parents as well. And I think that's what's causing parents to leave the public schools.
Thank you. Mr. Zarudo, what makes you the best candidate for this seat over your opponent? 30 seconds.
I think I have a different perspective. As a parent of two girls at school, I see the effects of the district's policies or lack of policies. I see from parents the frustrations they feel, from teachers where they feel like they are not heard. Every year, we talk about teachers matter, their input matters, and every year, the teachers are fighting for the same thing. And so I feel like I'm the voice that can, I'm the one that can listen to those voices.
Thank you. Ms. Wood, same question.
Do you repeat the question?
Sure. What makes you the best candidate for the seat over your opponent?
Well, I started in Leon County schools when I was 22 years old, and I'm an innovator. I have experience as a teacher, as a principal, for 32 years, and now eight years on the school board. So, you know, we've learned to expect the unexpected, whether it's a tornado or a nationwide pandemic, worldwide pandemic. So I believe I have the skills, the knowledge, the temperament to move us forward and work on everything we need to improve, because there's always room for improvement.
Thank you.
Let's move into the topic of charter schools a little bit more deeply. Florida's constitution mandates a system of free public schools. In your view, how have universal vouchers and charter schools impacted Leon County schools? How do you compete going forward? You'll have one minute. Roseanne Wood, we start with you.
Okay. Well, you know, charter schools at least have some accountability, and so I've come to think of them as another alternative for parents. It's not a level playing field, however, because there's a lot of choice about who gets to come to your school. So that's a problem I have, but at least they're graded on the same accountability measures. With private schools, you know, parents can go to private schools, take their kids all day long, but, and I fear that children might not be getting a broad experience when they go to a small, you know, three or four kid private school. Certainly, that's the parents' right at this point, but I think they may be missing out on the cultural experiences that public schools provide.
And how do you compete going forward?
Well, we compete by making our schools so attractive that they wouldn't think of going anywhere else, and that's our job. It's a competitive market, which competition's good, and so that's one of my skills is innovation.
Thank you. Daniel Zarudo, same question to you.
Can you ask it again?
Absolutely. Florida's constitution mandates a system of free public schools. In your view, how have universal vouchers and charter schools impacted Leon County schools? And how do you compete going forward? One minute.
So how it affected Leon County schools, I'd say negatively in a sense of it lost at least $22 million this year from the money's going to the child, wherever the parents decide for that child to go to school. And so that's the negative effect to it. There's also a negative effect that the district is responsible for oversight for kids with disabilities and IEP programs and stuff, and the county or the school district isn't being funded by those added duties, because the money followed the child to the school that they're attending to. And so those are areas where negatively it has affected Leon County. As far as those programs, I think it's a great option for parents to go somewhere else, because you have had 30 years from the same type of leadership, and we keep coming out with the same outcome.
Thank you. So why should parents choose to send their child to a Leon County public school over a private school or charter school? 45 seconds. Daniel Zarudo will begin with you.
My hope is, being on the board, I can bring in those parents back that have left. My hope is that parents can hear that someone's listening to your voices and your concerns. My hope is that we are able to listen to our teachers. Every year, we keep saying teachers matter, their voices matter, their opinions matter, and yet we still have the problems where the teachers aren't being heard. I think when everybody comes to the table, we come together, and we are better together.
Thank you. Roseanne Wood?
Well, I believe in partnerships, partnerships with the parents, with the teachers, with the administrators, and the school board and superintendent. I'm very proud of the outcomes in Leon County schools. If you've gone to the graduations I just went to and shook thousands of kids' hands, they are going to places all over the country. And also, I'm really proud of what we're doing with technical career education. We've had, we have invented or brought into our middle and high schools 22 new career tech programs. So kids who don't want to go to college, they have a new pathway, and we're working really hard to connect with our community and see what the community needs and where these young people can get really good jobs. I'm really proud of that, and I'm proud of all the things we're doing in early learning, and we can talk more about that when we have more time.
Thank you. Declining enrollment is a reality in many public school systems, including in Leon County. That prompted school board member Elva Striplin to call for a dialogue on the possibility of closing schools, which has happened in districts as near as Jacksonville. Is that something we need to discuss here in Tallahassee? Why or why not? 45 seconds, and Ms. Wood will begin with you.
Well, I don't think we're at that point yet. We still have 30-plus thousand students to serve, and we have some great schools. And, you know, I happen to believe in smaller schools, because you really get to know the children that way, so I think we're fine in that respect. Certainly, we're having to tighten our belt, and I wish we would get a little more money from the legislature to keep improving our teacher pay, because right now, we're just able to keep up. But we have done some great things with teacher pay. Beginning teachers started, when I came on board, at $36,000, and now they're at $47,500, which is a great improvement, but still not enough. And our veteran teachers over these eight years have raised their salaries $10,000, so I'm really proud of that, too. I don't see us closing schools.
Thank you. Daniel Zarudo?
I think we should have that dialogue. Sometimes we need to have the tough conversations that we don't want to talk about. If the enrollment number has been stagnant since the first election in 2016 when Ms. Woods took over, and our enrollment has not increased, and it has constantly declined, and when you, well, it stayed steady, when you account for population growth in Leon County, it has substantially declined. So that is a conversation to have.
Thank you.
Our next section focuses on challenges in the classroom. More than a third of Leon County school students missed 10% or more of their classroom time in the 2023 school year. How can Leon County schools reduce chronic absenteeism? And we will start with Mr. Zarudo. Responses have 45 seconds.
Let's go. Chronic absenteeism. I believe that in order to get kids to come to school, we have to address the root problem, and a lot of times, it's what's going on at home. For me, I would like to see an increase in programs at every school, where it's like All Pro Dads, or some kind of community involvement, where leaders in the community, parents, fathers, come to schools and have those meetings and breakfast, those gatherings to fellowship with one another, to talk about what the challenges are we're all facing, because you're not alone. You're not the only one that's a single mom or a single dad. You're not the only one that's dealing with a drug problem in the family. You're not the only one that's having all these challenges that are affecting our children, which is also affecting what's going on here in Leon County.
Ms. Wood?
Yes, I agree with you that one of our big challenges is attendance. After COVID, when people got used to staying home, it's been harder to get kids to come to school. And if we want to talk about parent involvement, that is the place we need to focus, is making sure those children are in front of a high-quality teacher every day. You know, parenting starts at the home, the parent is the first teacher, but when it's time to go to kindergarten, we want them to be ready. So that's why we want quality preschools, and we've done a lot of work, working with our preschools, even to the point of going to the hospitals and giving new moms brain bags for their kids, and for them to help their child learn. So I think the more emphasis we have on attendance and the parents partnering with us, the better the outcomes are going to be.
What's your level of satisfaction with the district's inclusivity and LGBTQ guide, and what needs adjusting? 30-second responses, please, starting with Ms. Wood.
Well, I worked really hard on the LGBTQ guide, because it's very important to protect our vulnerable students. There have been some restrictions passed down by the legislature, so we've had to adopt and amend it somewhat, but I think the overall, one of my overall goals in life really is to help vulnerable children, whether they're LGBTQ, whether they're minority, whether they're handicapped, whether they need IEP. That's our job, to make sure every child is, we are concerned with them, and we help them.
Mr. Zarudo?
I agree. Every child should feel safe in our schools. Every child should feel loved in our schools. As far as the LGBTQ guidelines, what mainly caused all the uproar that people heard was is when you were keeping things from parents, and people were trying to interject their beliefs on certain things without the parent's knowledge. But every child should be protected.
And is there anything that needs adjusting? In the guide?
In the guide? No, I would say just more communication. As a, as a, as a whole, I would say more communication as a district.
And do you think the guide should exist?
I think that, no, because you, we already have policies to protect everybody. No child should be bullied. No child should feel marginalized for whatever they believe, whether I agree with it or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. A 2017 study showed Leon County schools were among Florida's most segregated. Have we made any progress on that issue, and what needs to be done next? 45-second responses, please, starting with Mr. Zarudo.
Repeat that one more time, sorry.
Sure. A 2017 study showed Leon County schools were among Florida's most segregated. Have we made any progress on that issue, and what needs to be done next?
No, I don't think we've, we've done much progress in that. It is very segregated, and it's a shame. I think the biggest value a public school has is having people from all walks of lives, all beliefs, in one place for the common good of education and learning, to be ready for the next steps in life when they leave our schools. And that, you know, those are steps I think we need to take, is maybe, do we need to redistrict? Do we need to change the maps a little bit? You also have school choice, so is, are we being more integrated than segregated because of school choice? Maybe.
All right. Ms. Wood?
Would you repeat the question, please?
Sure. A 2017 study showed Leon County schools were among Florida's most segregated. Have we made any progress on this issue, and what needs to be done next?
Well, I think it's a very important question. Since I'm, we're in District 2, we have schools Buck Lake, Swift Creek, Chairs, Rickards, Fairview, Woodville, Hartsfield, and so we do see that separation, that segregation. I think we need to work with our realtors, for one, to help them understand what great quality schools we have in some of our Southside schools. We've spent $180 million in the last eight years, making those buildings beautiful, and investing where, you know, putting our checkbook where our goal, our values are, and so I'm proud of that, and I think we're going to be making progress with the new IB program at Hartsfield, which I was one of the initiators of that. We need to move forward on this issue.
Following up on that question, when is the last time the district did rezoning? Now, this might anger a lot of people, as parents do buy homes just to land the school of their choice, but some schools are maxed out while others are not, so is it time to talk about this? Ms. Wood? 45-second responses.
Well, you know, as you said, rezoning is a hotspot, because people, you know, walk with their, where they buy their home. So we, we believe in neighborhood schools, and it's a very, it needs to be thought out and talked about in the community. This is something we want people to want to go to their school and to love their school, and I'm not sure that rezoning is going to be the answer. I think we need to make sure that everyone understands the high-quality schools we have and innovate wherever we can to attract people to the schools in their zone.
Mr. Zarudo?
I think every option should be on the table to understand what the problems are and what are options for solutions, whether I like to see it or speak about it or not. As far as, you know, Ms. Wood's made a comment about realtors, the reason why we, I mean, the realtors need to increase people purchasing in certain areas, people can only afford what they can afford. And so if you're talking about affordable housing, those are typically in areas where sales economies tell them that I can only afford a $200,000 house. I want to be in Golden Eagle, but I can't get there. So I don't, I don't see how realtors fix that.
All right. We're moving on to district management and faculty, and it is report card time. What letter grade would you give our superintendent, and why? 30 seconds, Mr. Zarudo.
I would give him a C+. And I say that because you can't criticize parents for pulling kids out of schools, or parents being frustrated with the system, while at the same time saying, "Our school's great, and I don't understand why people aren't coming to our schools, and let me spend $100,000 on a marketing campaign and a logo," when you refuse to listen to the parents and teachers of the district.
Ms. Wood?
Well, in response to that, we listen to parents all the time. Sometimes they're yelling at us, but we listen to everybody who wants to share their opinion with us, and we're trying to look out for all parents' needs. In terms of marketing, we're the third-largest employer in Leon County schools, and we need to market our schools to let people know the great things, the opportunities that are going on in our schools, so.
And the letter grade?
And the superintendent, of course. I love our superintendent. I worked together with him as a principal. He cares about kids so much, he cares about teachers, and I give him an A.
An A. All right, excellent. Contract negotiations have begun again with Leon County schools' teachers. Past bargaining sessions have gotten contentious. What's your advice for the superintendent in keeping negotiations productive? 30 seconds, Ms. Wood?
We need to listen. We need to collaborate. We, the teachers' voices are very important, and we need to try to find as much money as we can to give that to the teacher, because the most important thing for a child to learn, which is my priority, is to have a high-quality teacher in front of them every day. And we're doing some Grow Your Own Teacher programs that I'm very excited about.
Thank you. Mr. Zarudo?
So I've kind of said this a couple of times, and we keep hearing it over and over. The teachers need to be listened. The teachers need to be heard. The teachers sent it out a candidate questionnaire, and pretty much everything in there was, "We want to be heard, we want to be heard, will you support us to be heard?" Why are we still talking about teachers that need to be heard?
Many teachers are concerned about whether what they say in a classroom can get them fired, fined, or sanctioned. How do you talk to teachers about this issue? Mr. Zarudo?
If you stick to the curriculum, you don't have a problem.
Do kids always stick to the curriculum?
We're talking about adults, not children. The teachers are the adults in there to handle the classroom, not the kids. And unfortunately, in some areas, that's what we have, is the kids running the schools.
Okay. Ms. Wood?
Well, I've never heard of the kids running the schools, but we always want student input. There is a, there is some fear by teachers, and we'll see that by them stifling debate, because they're afraid they're going to get in trouble. That should not be. They're afraid if they have one incorrect book by someone's opinion, that they might have, lose their teacher's license. So I think we need to really work on trusting our teachers and getting rid of the climate of fear, because we want engagement in our schools, we want people to have different points of view and be able to express them. The teacher is the leader of the school.
Ms. Wood, how do you think the school district handled the storm response during the May tornado outbreaks? 30 seconds.
Well, it's interesting. I was in the middle of the tornado, and I had 16 trees fall in my house, so, you know, it was, it was a, it was a crisis, and people who didn't have the tornado hit them maybe didn't realize that. So the superintendent was looking out for all the people, all the schools, all the bus drivers, all the teachers that it affected. I think we, we've learned from that, and our communication is going to improve. They've got a much better plan now how to communicate directly with parents through cell phones, and I think that's going to help. There was some confusion, but we were, you know, we were in a crisis.
Thank you. Mr. Zarudo?
Thank you. Regardless of the decision that Superintendent Hannah would have made, it's a 50-50. Would I have closed schools earlier or encouraged it? Yeah. I think what upset people the most was is by sending out a Facebook post saying, "Hey, staff, district people, stay home while kids are driving to the fairgrounds for their exams, teachers, bus drivers are on the road," and then you delete the com, the Facebook post to act like it never happened. And then you shut down comments, because you didn't want to hear what people had to say.
Thank you.
Okay, and let's move on to tech in the classroom. This question was inspired by the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Do you support the state's social media ban for minors? And how can Leon County schools help to prepare students for safe and responsible social media use? 45 seconds, and Daniel Zarudo, we begin with you.
I'm in favor of that. I do not let my girls be on social media. I mean, they're kind of young to be on it, but it's not good. When you have teachers asking me, "What is my view on these cell phones when kids are taking TikTok videos during class, or FaceTiming during class?" We have a problem. And if teachers were being heard, the district would have heard those voices.
Thank you. Roseanne Wood?
Actually, we have heard those voices, and we're having a workshop on this very issue this coming month. I've been involved with a group looking at the book, The Anxious Generation, and we are learning that students having cell phones all the time on the internet is harmful. It's harmful to their mental health. The numbers have skyrocketed on depression, suicide, and they're, they're bringing that a lot back to the children's lack of socialization, because they're so fixated on their phone and not their friends. So I think we have some work to do on that issue, and we're going to be talking about it. I've asked for it to be talked about in July, to start thinking about how we're going to enforce the policy that we have already enacted, which is no cell phones in the classroom during instruction.
All right, well, school board policy requires students turn off their cell phones during class and in hallways with limited exceptions. Is this really happening? Should schools go further with regulating or banning cell phones? 30 seconds. Roseanne Wood, we begin with you.
I'm starting to lean toward that. I never would have thought I would say that, but having been in this book group to really see the impact that's going on with cell phones and students, and their disengagement from learning, and their engagement in YouTube and TikTok and that during school, we need to come up with a solution, and I'm starting to move toward saying, "No cell phones at school." But we have to work out the parent issues, because parents want to be able to be in touch with their kids at all time, which is, so we need to, we need to have a community conversation about this.
Daniel Zarudo?
I think it's simple. Phones aren't out during class. Parents do have a right to be able to communicate with their student, with their children when they need to. And so the, it's simple, just no phones during class. And the other thing is, is we talk about policies, you can write all the policies you want. If you're not enforcing them, none of the policies, none of the policies matter.
Thank you. What is your vision for integrating AI, artificial intelligence, into the classroom? Daniel Zarudo, you have 30 seconds.
I am not an expert on the AI. I do see the good things out of it and the bad things out of it. I could see a lot of plagiarism or copywriting, and, you know, kids writing papers that they didn't really write, they just type in a few sentences, and AI takes care of it. So I would have to talk to a specialist in IT to figure out how policies, you know, could, could be put in place.
Ms. Wood?
I think one of the most important things about AI is that students need to be taught about what is AI, and what, how it can manipulate you, and how it can, you need to be able, students need to be able to distinguish between the truth and something that is produced by AI that's not the truth at all. So I think one of our jobs is really to help children, help teachers, help all of us to understand the good things about AI and the dangers of AI. So I almost think it should be a course.
This next section is focused on the influence of Moms for Liberty. The conservative parents group, Parents Rights Group, Moms for Liberty, has become a potent force in school board politics around the state and the nation. The group has joined Governor Ron DeSantis in saying outright that public schools have become bastions of indoctrination. Are teachers and administrators indoctrinating students in Leon County? 30-second responses, please, beginning with Ms. Wood.
Absolutely not. I have been in the school system for, I'd say, almost 50 years, and I have never run across a teacher indoctrinating a student. They want students to be able to read, to do math, to do scientific exploration. Indoctrination is not the role of the schools. The role of schools is to teach children critical thinking, so they can think for themselves and make their own decisions. So absolutely not, and I don't think that's a problem. I think that's been way overblown, and it's a mistake.
Mr. Zarudo?
I, say the question again?
Sure. The conservative parental rights group Moms for Liberty has become a potent force in school board politics around the state and the nation. The group has joined Governor Ron DeSantis in saying outright that public schools have become bastions of indoctrination. Are teachers and administrators indoctrinating students in Leon County?
I wouldn't say that administrators and all teachers are indoctrinating students. I am sure there might be one or two that have certain beliefs, whether I agree with them or not, that might, might inject their beliefs. That shouldn't diminish parents that have concern if that is happening.
All right. Would you seek or accept the endorsement of Moms for Liberty? And Mr. Zarudo, it looks like the past president and vice chair may have donated to your campaign, so can you both describe your relationship with the group or its members? 30-second responses, Mr. Zarudo.
Your question one more time?
Sure. Would you seek or accept the endorsement of Moms for Liberty? Mr. Zarudo, does look like you received a campaign contribute, a contribution from the past chair. So can you both please explain your relationship with the group or its members?
So the members for Moms for Liberty gave to my campaign. Am I seeking for their endorsement? I'm not seeking for anyone's endorsement. I'm running for the parents and students of Leon County. I'm not running for a group that has a certain ideology, whether I agree with it or disagree with it.
And Ms. Wood?
I'm not seeking endorsements either. I've gotten some already, but mainly from people who know my work. And no, I would not accept an endorsement from the Moms for Liberty.
Okay.
All right, we're shifting over to the lightning round that moves even quicker. All right, we're shifting over to the lightning round that moves even quicker because we are in the education realm here. We are looking at one sentence, not run-on sentences. You can do an "and," but let's stick it with "one." So the first lightning round question, Louisiana just made it happen. Do the Ten Commandments belong in the classroom? Roseanne Wood?
No. I believe in separation of church and state. We have 56 different nationalities in our school system, 56 different languages.
Thank you. Mr. Zarudo, same question?
Yes.
And the reason?
It's part of our founding documents. It's part of our founding fathers.
Mr. Zarudo, what about rainbow flags?
No.
Why?
Because we were just talking about ideologies. If you are not allowed to fly a BLM flag in our schools, or a Trump, or whatever political ideology, then no other flag should be flown in our schools.
Roseanne Wood, same question?
Flags, we fly the American flag and the State of Florida flag in our schools.
Thank you. What's one book you think every student should read and why? Roseanne Wood, one sentence.
Trying to think of one. I mean, elementary, middle, high school, there are so... I have to pick 1984.
Because?
Because I think we need to really understand authoritarianism, and 1984 does that.
Mr. Zarudo?
The Bible.
Okay. Mr. Zarudo, what school has the most pressing need in the district at the moment?
I would have to talk to every school to know that answer.
Okay. Ms. Wood?
Well, our schools that are in DA status, which is under accountability, that haven't achieved the school grade they want to yet, those are the schools who need the most help.
What's those schools?
Well, we have several. I'm not going to mention the names because I don't actually believe in the school grades.
Okay. Ms. Wood, how many times have you attended a school board meeting?
Oh, more than you can count. And I've learned patience, and I've learned congeniality and compromise.
All right. Mr. Zarudo, same question. How many times have you attended a school board meeting?
All year, almost for the last month, so 20?
Okay. Mr. Zarudo, what's your single biggest accomplishment during your tenure as a Leon County school board member or as a Leon County school's parent? Biggest accomplishment? And it can't be the birth of your child.
Biggest accomplishment? I guess it's small, but I think helping grow our PTO at our local school, trying to get parents to get involved and buy in to be at functions, spend time with their kids.
Thank you. Ms. Wood?
My biggest accomplishment is listening to all the facts and making good decisions. And, you know, helping Heartsville become an IB magnet school was one of them.
Thank you. All right. You did. We're done with the lightning round.
We're done. Okay, great.
All right, let's move into the health realm. This question was also inspired by the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Should Leon County schools be more involved in supporting student mental health and resiliency? If so, how? 45 seconds. And Roseanne Wood, we begin with you.
Yes. We have, in fact, hired a social worker at every school, an extra counselor at most of our schools, because if students are unhappy emotionally, they can't learn. And so it has become our job to help these children get through whatever emotional problem they're having and teach them the skills of how to do that for their life so that they can learn. And that's our main goal. We want students to learn.
Thank you. Daniel Zarudo?
As long as the parents are being informed of what's being talked about and what's happening, I don't have a problem with that.
And should there be any privacy between that school district and the child?
No.
Thank you. Next question. As of July 1, Florida law authorizes school districts and charter schools to have volunteer school chaplains on school campuses and provide counseling to students. Should Leon County start a school chaplain program? Why or why not? 45 seconds. Daniel Zarudo will begin with you.
I'd say sure. If we're talking about being inclusive in our community and having different views and perspectives about things, that should be an option if a school wants it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wood?
Well, again, we have reached out to all of our churches in Tallahassee, Leon County, to come in and be mentors and help our kids with tutoring. But when it comes to being a chaplain, that, I think, crosses the line because, again, we don't want indoctrination, and we won't have control of that if we have chaplains in our schools meeting privately with students. So...
It's not indoctrination if the parents are involved.
Well, I would say that we need our churches involved with the schools to help us be the best schools we can be, but not necessarily chaplains.
I know the Church of Satan has expressed interest in being a chaplain if this law moves forward. Is that something Leon County schools would slash should allow? 15 seconds.
No, as I said, I don't think we should have chaplains that have a particular religious point of view with our students.
Mr. Zarudo?
Would I like it? No. But if we allow one, we should allow all.
Okay, thank you.
With two years of distance from the pandemic, what's the biggest thing you've learned? And what would you do differently next time? 45 seconds. Daniel Zarudo?
I would hope that we would not give up our liberties so frequently, so easily. What we've learned, I would hope that our leaders would learn not to be overzealous and fear monger people during times of emergencies.
Thank you. Ms. Wood?
Would you repeat the question?
Yes. With two years of distance from the pandemic, what's the biggest thing you've learned? And what would you do differently next time?
Well, I'm very proud of the way we handled the pandemic. We had people delivering food. We had bus drivers working during the pandemic. We had health centers. We gave every child a computer that they would have to help bridge that divide. So the thing that I learned is to listen to the vulnerable. I had teachers come up to me and say, "If you hadn't required masks when you did, I had an at-risk pregnancy, and I wouldn't have been able to stay as a teacher." I had parents tell me the same thing about their children. So I think we erred on the side of caution, and some people had to sacrifice for the good of all.
Thank you. Lynn?
All right. We are now on the topic of school safety. School shootings have become the biggest fear of parents, teachers, and administrators. How would you, as an elected school leader, ensure that such a thing cannot happen here in Leon County? 45-second responses, please, beginning with Ms. Wood.
Again, I'm so proud of the safety measures we have implemented in Leon County schools. We have one entry locations in our schools so students can only come through one location. We have weapons dogs that the kids know about now, and they can detect a weapon, but they're not scared of the dogs. I think the students are happy about that. We have new cameras that can detect weapons. In fact, I don't know if you know this, but even last year, we had, I think, 12 guns that brought to campus. This past year, one with a fourth grader, an unloaded gun, showing his friends. So we've made great strides in safety. I think we're the safest place to be in this whole town.
Mr. Zarudo?
I think the district has done an outstanding job as far as safety for weapons and stuff. Superintendent Hannah did a great job. Jimmy's done a great job. The technology that they're using to make sure that if there is a gun, it can be detected right away. It's been amazing. I also think in order to reduce the gun crimes that we're having in this city, we need to, again, like I was saying, interaction with parents and teachers and bringing the community together because we are creating... The issues we're seeing in our schools is a reflection of what's happening in our streets. And we need to help our children be able to handle those emotions, thoughts, and feelings and correct negative behavior, or else we're just going to continue having the shootings that we see in the streets.
Every year, we read the headlines about a local high school mourning a student who was killed by gunfire. Should the schools be playing an active role in tackling the city's persistent gun violence problem? And if so, what specifically should they be doing? 30-second responses, beginning with Mr. Zarudo.
I think one of the main things early on, you know, Ms. Woods talks about early education being a factor for reading. I think that goes too with safety and teaching our kids how to be emotional responsibly. I think a lot of times what we're seeing in our streets is because I'm mad, and you're acting out on your feelings because you haven't picked up the social skills or skills in life to be able to handle what your emotions, what's going on.
Ms. Wood?
I agree with that. We need to teach our children how to control their emotions and give them coping skills. But as far as the community go, we are working really hand in glove with the sheriff's office, with the police department, with our community pastors, with the whole community to try to come together to help these children understand that violence is not the answer, guns are not the answer, and this is a community-wide problem that can only be solved by all the community leadership and parents helping.
And one follow-up, is the Leon County School District adequately addressing bullying and harassment? And is there anything else we should be doing? 30-second responses, please, beginning with Ms. Wood?
Well, we have a strong anti-bullying curriculum and ability for students to report that. You can always do more. That's one of my big number-one things. No child should ever be bullied at a school. And if we find out it's happening, we need to nip it in the bud immediately, bring the parents in, bring the kids in, get them talking, getting them to understand they have more in common than they have different, and that no one likes to be bullied, including the bullier. So I think we have a good program, and it can always be improved.
Mr. Zarudo?
I would agree with mostly everything that Ms. Wood said, except, again, I'll go back to earlier. If we're not enforcing the policies, the policies mean nothing. I am actually running because of bullying issues, because our district is failing. Changes were done last year on bullying policies that I know were spearheaded by certain members on the board, and I'm appreciative of that. And I was proud to be able to motion that while I was on the school advisory or the district advisory council. But I think the district needs to make sure that administrators and teachers are enforcing those policies.
All right. We're now going to partisan politics in this nonpartisan race. In this November's general election, voters will be asked to approve or reject an amendment to the Florida Constitution to change the election of the 67 local school boards from nonpartisan to partisan. Should the election of school board members be nonpartisan or partisan, and why? Mr. Zarudo, 30 seconds.
No, it should be nonpartisan. My political views, or Ms. Wood's political views, should have no bearing on making sure that my child or her child or grandchildren can read, write, know science, and be good stewards of this community.
Thank you. Ms. Wood?
This is the one partisan question I may answer, and I completely disapprove of making school board elections partisan. We have too much partisanship in this country right now, too much division. And when you're a school board member, you aren't thinking Republican, Democrat, Independent. You're thinking child. And I've never met a Republican or Democrat child because I've never cared about that issue. And school board members should remain nonpartisan.
Lawmakers obviously think otherwise because they've put it on the ballot. So what is your party affiliation, and how does it inform your views on your platform? 30 seconds. Roseanne Wood?
Well, once again, this is a nonpartisan race, so I have my personal views. And I'm a Democrat, registered Democrat. But that doesn't necessarily affect how I rule or process my opinions on the school board. I'm looking out for every child.
Thank you. Mr. Zarudo?
I second what she said. I'm a registered Republican.
Thank you.
So what do you think of the school district's new logo and rebranding campaign? Have you seen any results so far? 45 seconds. Daniel Zarudo, we begin with you.
I think it was handled wrong. If the school district wanted to know if we need a new logo or part of the marketing campaign for the logo, they should have involved the school advisory councils. They should have involved the district advisory council, and they should have gotten input from people in the district.
Ms. Wood?
Well, people made a big deal about the logo. The logo, I think, actually cost $9,000. The point of marketing our school system, as we talked about earlier, is that we need to let all of our community know what great things are going on. And, you know, we sort of went from black and white to color in terms of the logo. I was there in, you know, 1975, and we were afraid to print something in color because it costs too much. Now the world has changed, and so every big corporation... We're the third-largest employer in Leon County. We need to let people know who we are, why we're proud of ourselves, and what is going on in the schools.
Ms. Wood, in 30 seconds, why do you think the reaction was so brutal on social media to the new logo? And what did you learn from that process?
Well, you know, people think about their pocketbook. $100,000 sounds like a whole lot of money. Our budget for the school system is $600 million. So that is just such a miniscule part when we're trying to recruit students back into the school and have parents trust us. And I think they can trust us. Every child that leaves the district, $8,000 walks out the door. So right now, we have $22,000, $25,000... Excuse me, $1 million walking out the door.
Thank you.
I'm sorry that they felt that way, but I didn't think it was a big deal.
Thank you.
Not a big deal. $10,000. Buck Lake PTO spent $10,000 from their funds to have sensory rooms for their kids. So $10,000, it's a big difference when we're talking about kids that have nothing. As far as the logo and the backlash, they, everyone should be mad. Nobody was informed that this was going on. No one had input on anything. And you want to talk about logo, that everyone wants to know who we are? You know who tells you who you are? The parents and students of Leon County. They will market your product by saying, "Man, they're great."
Can I respond?
Sure.
Well, I mean, we just saw TCC. They changed their name. They changed their logo. This is just what is happening in this modern world. I agree that $10,000 is a lot of money, and we should push everything to the school. But the purpose of having this marketing campaign is to inform people, to bring them back. You know, 10 kids, you know, $80,000.
TCC gets private monies versus all taxes paid. As far as kids coming back, we also heard a superintendent say, "Hey, if I got 12 kids, we made that $100,000 back." Then the same sentence said, "I'll anticipate losing 100 students this year." So let's not play numbers.
All right. We're going to keep moving.
Happy to.
We're going to keep moving. Our next section is devoted to the issue of graduation. The latest data on the district's graduation rate is reported from 2023, and it shows economically disadvantaged students and African-American students with the lowest graduation rates. So how can you help correct that disparity? 45-second responses, please, beginning with Ms. Wood?
In Leon County, we actually have a very high graduation rate. Before the pandemic, we were the top five in the state. So it's taking time. We've learned... The big thing we've learned is that the pandemic had a disproportional effect on minority and poor people. And so we are working hard to close those gaps now, and I think you're going to see, now that we have classes that have really graduated, that we're in the middle of the pandemic, I think you're going to start seeing those graduation rates going up more, especially with our new VOTEC programs that are going to keep kids in school.
Mr. Zarudo?
We could have spent $100,000 on tutoring, helping these kids that are struggling, instead of just saying, "Good luck next year."
So how can you help address the disparity in graduation rates?
Focusing funds on making sure that these kids are getting the help they need.
Okay. This next question was submitted by the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. What would be your approach to career guidance and mentorship programs to help students explore different career paths and prepare for future employment? 30-second responses, please, starting with Mr. Zarudo.
I would encourage legislatures and the governor's office to push more of mentoring with state employees and local stakeholders so they can get invested in the schools. Have them adopt each agency. They could adopt three schools, one elementary, one middle, one high school, and invest back because those are going to be the future of our kids that are going to be running these agencies at some point. And so I think it gives them avenues and gives them insights of what options are out there for them.
All right. Ms. Wood?
Could you say the question one more time?
Sure. What would be your approach to career guidance and mentorship programs to help students explore diverse career paths and prepare for future employment?
Well, again, we need all the mentors in the schools we can get. I agree that we... In the past, we did have the governor saying that all state workers could have an hour of comp time to come into the schools. That was a great policy. We had a lot of mentors then. In terms of career paths, I feel so good about what we're doing. Starting in middle school, students are being exposed to careers in nursing and welding and cybercrime. This is important for their future paths.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We are tired. We've been asking all the questions. What is one question you'd like to ask your opponent? Ms. Wood, you can start. 45-second answer.
Well, I guess, as, you know, operating a huge school system, what is your Well, I guess, as, you know, operating a huge school system, what is your experience in, you know, supervising, you know, 5,000 employees and that sort of thing?
Well, over my life, I was in management. I'm going to age myself. Back in the day, I used to work for Bruno's. Y'all remember back here in Tallahassee. And I've been in management pretty much my whole life. I'm a project manager for the Florida Commission for Transportation Disadvantaged. And so I handle millions of dollars of state funds to make sure that people of needs are getting transportation as much as we can with the funds that we have.
That's great. That's a great career you have.
Thank you. Mr. Zaruto, your turn.
I guess my question is, is what advice would you give parents to navigate the school system?
Well, to get involved, as you have, and to support the schools. Come in and see how you can help, not just your own child, but other children in the school that needs help. And so, you know, parent involvement, parent partnership is one of the most important things we have in need in our schools.
I agree with that.
And so I would encourage parents to get involved and be our partner.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Leon County Schools recently reported more than 1,000 students were identified as homeless. If elected, what would you recommend be done to support homeless students? In 45 seconds, Roseanne Wood.
Well, we do have a homeless coordinator in the school system that goes out and tries to seek shelter for these children, tries to get services for these children, and tries to connect them back, of course, always with their family. We need help from the community, from the city, from the county. Homelessness is a problem in Leon County, and we need to tackle it, I believe, harder. And also, you know, affordable housing. Those are two of our biggest problems in Tallahassee, which do lead to crime. And so, again, we need to work together. But we offer a safe shelter in schools. We are sometimes, you know, the home that children have. And so our job, in some ways, is to make them know they're loved and cared for, and that we're there for them.
Daniel Zaruto?
I've heard the stories of the challenges a lot of kids are facing. And I commend the district for the work they do to try to help these kids. Like many things, money's never enough. The resources are never enough. But I think they're doing everything they can with the help of the county and the city to try to help these kids.
Okay. What is Leon County's, the Leon County School District's greatest challenge regarding special education? Mr. Zaruto?
I believe we don't have the resources. I think, as a board member, I would champion parents to join their PTOs or organizations, to go to the legislature, voice your concerns, team up with agencies for persons with disabilities or blind services, to get a higher voice so they understand the need that's happening, that these kids are facing. The shortfalls, funding-wise, teachers-wise, educated teachers-wise. And I think that the fact that the Capitol is our backyard, we are not tapping that resource.
Ms. Wood?
Well, you know, one thing about the public schools is we take everybody. We have children aged 21, Gretchen Everhart. We have any student who walks in the door, we're going to serve them the best we can. That's one thing that differentiates us from charter schools and private schools, because they don't have to do that. But we do, and we do it with fidelity. We really work with every child to make sure that their needs are met. Do we always get there? Probably not. But I think the intention is there, and I fully support helping our, especially our handicapped children.
All right.
All right. I think, we got to go to closings?
We got time to close.
All right. We are going to closings. You made it. So you have a minute to talk directly to voters here. And you can drop your website and whatever else you want people to know. Mr. Zaruto, we're going to start with you. You have 60 seconds to speak directly to the voters watching you.
Thank you. So my name's Daniel Zaruto. I'm running for Leon County District 2, Leon County School Board District 2. I want people to know that I'm a dad who's been involved. I'm a PTO dad. I'm on the school advisory council. I've been on the district advisory council. And I'm here to make sure that my kids get the best education they can, that your kids are getting the best education they can. I've got eight years to make sure that my daughters are ready to hit the road running, to make the best and reach their full potential. And I want every child in our district to have that opportunity. It should be that the education I got here in Leon County should be better when my kids graduate from Leon County. And so if you would, just go to my website, zarutoforschoolboard, or Daniel Zaruto for School Board on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wood, take us out.
Okay. Well, like I said, I started when I was 22-year-old in the school system as a teacher, and then 32 years as a principal, and now eight years as school board member. I think people in the community know they can trust me. I hope they do. I'm always going to be thinking through the lens of what's best for the child. And so that's what I do. And I hope that people support me and know that I am a calm resource. I will listen to people. I take phone calls. I'll be happy. I love to help people. So in my role as a school board member, that's one thing I've learned, is I can sometimes help an individual parent or student, and that sort of keeps me going. It's important to me. And I hope that my service has been beneficial, and that District 2 will support me by re-electing me again.
All right. Thank you to the candidates for the illuminating discussion, and to our audiences for joining the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, WFSU, and the Tallahassee Democrat for this program.
You can find a replay of this forum on our YouTube pages, tallahassee.com and wfsu.org. The recorded broadcast will be this Tuesday, July 2, at 11:00 a.m. on WFSU 88.9. So tell your friends.
Our next live stream forum will be at 1:00 p.m. today, Wednesday, June 26, and it will be with the two candidates for Leon County School Board District 4, Lori Lawson-Cox and Jeremy Rogers. Tomorrow, Wednesday, 27, we will have two more race forums, two more races for forums here at 11:00 a.m., the Candidates for Leon County Superintendent of Schools, and at 1:00 p.m., the Tallahassee City Commission, Seat 2. And remember, you have until July 22 to register to vote or change your party for the primary election. Early voting begins August 10, with Election Day taking place on August 20.
And if you have any questions for any of our upcoming forums, please email us at news@tallahassee.com. And you can look for our special election section. You already said that. No, you didn't. You said registrations. Sorry. And you can look for our special election section of the Tallahassee Democrat with interviews with all the candidates on the ballots, which will be printed and inserted in Sunday, August 4 paper. Thank you so much. Have a great day, unless you're joining us again in an hour, and you'll have an even better day.[1776.76][1776.76][music]
[music]